Before we adjourn, but I'm gonna let Teresa eat so she can record me later.
We're recording on here.
Oh, okay. So the council did meet in closed session on one matter of existing litigation, Ferris versus City of San Luis Obispo. The council voted five zero, motion by council member Marks, second by council member Pease, to authorize the defense of the litigation that will be accomplished through my office and through an engagement with Jarvis Fay LLP, Rick Jarvis as the counsel in defense of the city. No further reports.
Just stop showing that.
Your crowd's waiting to jump in?
Oh, yeah. Participants?
Are we, is this still being recorded right now?
Do we have to make the announcement?
To raise your hand?
Well, nobody's there.
Is it gonna automatically share our? Is it gonna automatically share the slides? Oh, well.
If you opened it and zoomed and shared it through Zoom. There you go.
Are these special meetings also posted on YouTube or?
It will be. We can't do it live because I have a CBOA meeting in that room at one o'clock, so they would conflict, but we'll upload the videos after.
Go ahead and get started with item number one on the non-close session agenda items. And so the concept of council interns is something that has come up a couple of times. So this is an opportunity to have a discussion with council about what you're currently using your interns for. What exactly is there a need? Is there even a need for interns? And then kind of have an open discussion. We have Nicole here and I've done some research on what is allowable within our charter. So if there's any questions that you have for staff, we're gonna answer those questions. But this is more so supposed to be kind of an open discussion.
So is this us? Do we jump in?
Which is great. That's totally what I asked for.
That's what she asked for.
Who gets to go? Someone asked for this.
I'll go ahead and start because this has been on my mind for a while of interns and just kind of wondering what you all have done. And so, and maybe we can all just share what your practice has been. I've had two interns, both in high school students. One, the first one was from the Bay Area. She was a senior in high school, knew somebody who went to Cal Poly and heard that our council was, had some of the interests that we did. So she had, did not particularly have interest in, you know, social media or that type of thing. She was interested in policy. And so I worked with her and she did research on legislation for my Cal Cities role. And so she would write kind of little position paper recommendations, like here's the evaluations and here's some links. And then I was able to go either do a support letter for something or just provide feedback. And there were a couple other things like that. So we met online, maybe, I think probably just once a month throughout the year, a little bit more frequently at the beginning and then stretched out a little. And now, and wrote a letter of recommendation for her and she's at Georgetown and I just talked to her the other day and she, yeah, she said it was really a great experience and, but I didn't provide any compensation. I didn't do like a gift thing at the end either, and that's one of the questions I have. So, and then the second intern was a high school student who did the social media, the by youth, for youth. And that was her interest in doing some of that.
Video.
What's that?
I never got to see the final video.
Oh, is that right? There were like five little ones. They were awesome that they were put out through the social media channels. Did you see them? Okay, we should see, we should send those to council. They were, and yeah, they were fun. I mean, there were, I didn't have a ton of involvement other than kind of like, she wanted to understand what the city was and then be able to kind of translate that to her peers. And so we kind of went through all the departments and she ended up kind of picking five programs to be able to do these videos. And then she ran with it. So she set up the script and she had tourism and they went downtown. She had a Parks and Rec one. And so anyway, so I think that went well. And again, I didn't, there wasn't a compensation other, you know, letter of recommendation. And I can't remember where she ended up attending. So that went well as well. So those were my two intern experiences. I know that there's been a lot of social media ones, but anybody wants to jump in and say what they've been doing.
I have a question for you first, Andy. So like, how much time would you say that the two, I mean separately, because maybe they were completely different in terms of time commitment, but how much would you say? You, how much time did you spend with them or other city staff? And then how much time do you think that they spent on their own?
Yeah. So I would say it was probably for the first one with the policy, you know, maybe five hours a month for me and, you know, maybe 10 hours a month for her. Honestly, I don't think it was a lot, maybe a little bit more, 10, 15 for the month. And then the other one was a little bit more compact, probably maybe a little bit less time for me because she ended up working with staff. But it was a, it was a staff, some time for staff for sure. But it seemed like people were pretty happy with the investment at the time because it did get a fair amount of traction in social media. And both of them approached me. I didn't, I haven't ever done outreach and I don't have one right now. So that was kind of another question. It's like, do we want to have some way to, you know, solicit or standardize or just kind of keep it random and let all of you guys get that?
I don't have one right now either. I actually haven't had like a long-term formal relationship. I've had a couple of sort of one-off particular policies that somebody was interested in and kind of doing up a report on like what other communities are doing or what's happening in the news around a particular issue. And that's been the extent of it so far. That's just been a, you know, produce a couple pages and see if we could get moving on particular issues.
I've had 11 interns.
Eleven? Oh, my gosh.
Usually anywhere from, the max I've ever had at one time was three and that was overall too much. There was a period, there was about a six-week period where one had come back. That was in high school and worked with other two who were working beautifully together. They were at the end of their year. That's the longest I've had anyone at one time. And that was actually fantastic. But then when I tried that again, three with randos, it was not good. Would not suggest more than two at a time unless you just have a great relationship with them already. I've only done social media and communications internships. I've offered, some people said, oh, I want to learn something. And then they didn't really. So those ones usually petered out. I, of course, have done letters of recommendation for most of them. They've gotten the Cornell, Cal Poly, UCSB, Stanford Law School, and then the employment. And then I would say that we typically would meet once a week, eventually kind of, and once every two weeks. We text and email and DM probably daily. Email, not really that often. I take that back. But DM and text, pretty close to daily or every other day. I probably spend about six hours a month-ish and they probably spend about 15 to 20 hours a month. And it just depended on the person. I've given as little as a hundred dollars up to the $500 max of gift cards. I try, I have a, how do you like to be recognized kind of sheet? And they say what kind of candy they like, what kind of movies they like, what they like to do, you know, all that, how they like to be recognized. So some people feel comfortable, majority of people have felt comfortable putting themselves on my social medias, like the new intern of the month or whatever, or of the time period. And they usually like that because they get some kind of kudos out of that. I've let them all say, you can pick whatever title you want, whatever works for you. Because it's not really a real position. Had to say that sounds, you know, I say differently, but I do have a very rough job description and a rough job posting. The recent change for the, my last two had challenges doing their volunteer form for the city because we changed volunteer programs. So I think those two are finally in. I have to double check. Okay, good, cool. So I always make sure they do the volunteer form for the city. And I think that's all the things you could ever.
So I have a question. So this is just for your city council work? It's not for campaign?
Right. I've had different interns for campaign, but just for city council.
Okay. So you, what you're talking about now is just the city council?
Just city council.
Okay.
I've had it as city council member and as mayor both.
And are they high school or Cal Poly students or some of each would have been successful?
I've had, um, I've had high school, well, Sohigh, I've had Questa and Cal Poly. I haven't had Hancock or Mission that just, you know, and some have just been word of mouth. Some has been, I've put out a posting with Frank Warren and someone else in the Cal Poly, Ollie Si Communications from, others have been, they said, hey, I know someone who wants to do this because they've seen what I've been doing. So that's been cool. One was actually a sibling, saw what their older brother did and then they came to me two years later. So that was kind of fun. So it's been really super random.
But so, and then mostly their product is social media posts?
Yeah. Every now and then, they, no, the newsletter, I have someone else that I need to do that. The, it's been social media, it's been creating, it's like a couple of them like created videos and stuff around like the holidays and shop local and that kind of thing. When, once we started doing the city recaps and city previews, that took a lot of energy that I was having people do away, which was fantastic. Been very, very thankful for Winnie and very thankful because it, it just not being in layman's terms, the blah de blah titles that we have on the agenda just don't make sense on average to a general person who's not been paying attention or doesn't have like public sector lingo. So was trying to make it, this is what this means, this is why you might want to care, this is what we did, this is why we decided this. But now there's, you know, the e-Scrap video and the recap preview. I don't see the point.
And, and sorry, the, the gift cards, is that a city budget or is that?
Yep.
That was my question. I was like, wait, you're paying $500 out of pocket for each of these people?
I mean, I do, but I get reimbursed. You know, I'm not, you know, and it's not 500 at once. I mean, 500 was the max I gave and that was for the people who were with me for an entire year. So, I mean, I had two people with me for an entire year.
And gift cards to their?
Target or Visa, what's that place? Trader Joe's? Yeah, Food for Less. Basically to ask them what they're interested in. And that's what I, I mean, one was anime, I'm pretty sure.
Yep. And it comes out of her professional development budget.
Yeah. So it limits what I get to do, but it also kind of creates more communication that I don't have time to do. I'm a full-time worker, so. And that's, and then the other thing is, is kind of, you know, we didn't have a DEI office at first when, when I started. And so we didn't do as much on diversity. And so I wanted to make sure that we were, I was putting out, you know, awareness months and people for kind of the historical side of things. And that's kind of separate, but it's not in the sense that it's, it's not our city meetings. But it's what I care about and what I think that we're trying to increase diversity and knowledge is through education and communication.
I've probably, I've kind of followed the Erica model. I have, I've had probably four or five, I would say, in the last couple of years. And again, separate, I've had some for my campaign before, but I've had separation between who does my city social media and who has been involved with my campaign social media. So most, all of mine have been, all of my city interns have been college students, Cal Poly. I have one right now. I have probably one lined up for the winter. I've tried to have two and it just becomes a lot of management because it does, I meet with them once a week over Zoom usually. And then once I've had them kind of for a while, then it can back off to every other week. I was meeting one at Scout on campus, you know, every other week for a while. I had that intern for two quarters though. And so we kind of got into a groove and didn't need to meet as regularly.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Two quarters is the best. Like three, I feel like depending on who it is, it's just too much. And then they got kind of phased out. But one is like, just as you're in the groove, it's done.
Yeah. So I've had, yeah, I've had a couple that went for two quarters, which was really nice. And now I've got one that will probably only be one quarter because, oh, and so this is probably different. I don't know if you've done this, but the one that I have now is earning credits for, for Cal Poly through the journalism program. So she has to do 100 hours throughout the quarter. And so that's 10 hours a week, which is a lot more. I would say that historically might have been four to five hours a week, probably because it's just been post-making and that doesn't take, doesn't take that long. So what are you feeling that time with? So, well, she's, she's behind on hours now. So I've, I've given her just a couple of research projects, kind of still around communications and PR and journalism that I hope will kind of help grow the social media followings on the two, because I have Facebook and Instagram. And so she's doing a little bit of research on how to boost followership or whatever, whatever you call that. And she's done the intern or the volunteer form. But I have wondered like, you know.
Do you do the letter though for them for their, their class?
Oh, yeah. So for the class, I had to fill out basically like a, a form, an E-form at the beginning of the internship, saying what the objectives were going to be of the, of the internship. And then I had to do a midterm report that was due this past Friday. That's like another Google form. And I'm assuming I'll probably have to do one at the end. And just, you know, it literally goes through, okay, you had objective one. How have you met this objective? Objective two, have they met this objective? And so it was actually really good because it reminded me what I put as the objective. Oh, we haven't done that yet. Better make sure we do that. But I got to make up the objectives and I ran them by the student to make sure that this was stuff that she wanted to learn and wanted it to be a good experience for them. And in the past, I have done gift cards, not, I haven't, I think I did one that was 100 and one that was 150. So. And I don't know if I will still do that for this one since they were earning units. I feel like that could be a 50/50 trade, you know.
Yeah. That's kind of how I gave some less was for that reason. They were doing, kind of getting something else for it.
Yeah.
Or there's less time.
Well, I've never had a formal intern, but I've worked with students politically all the time, depending on the issue. Like right now, I'm meeting with students about the condition of rental housing in San Luis Obispo. But I'm not, there's no formal relationship. It's more city council politicizing stuff. And certainly climate action, students around that issue, just, it's always been around issues. I'd say the one exception was a long time ago, and you guys know Benjamin Peterson? Yeah. He wanted to be a, an intern or a fellow for the Senate. And so I said, well, why are you talking to me about that? I don't have, he said, well, I need to know more about like policy. And so I did kind of do an educational thing with him. But again, I haven't called anybody an intern.
Oh, I forgot one more thing. And then one of the projects, they created a social media manual. So I have like brandings and how your post should go and what colors and fonts you should use and repost app and that kind of thing. But Canvas changed and the repost app has changed. Now things aren't as free and, you know.
I've also had students come to me and just want to, this is kind of probably what you're experiencing. They come to me, they want to talk about a certain issue or they want to talk about what it's like to be on council or maybe they're interested in a career in government or an internship of some other type. And so they've, you know, I've met with them, had coffee, whatever, and talked to them about, you know, my experience, talked to them about how I have, you know, hired or utilized interns in the past and, and that I know some city departments have done, I've had paid internships and one, one intern that I, that I was talking to got swooped up by Public Works, I think it was, last year for a paid internship, which is awesome, you know. And so I would love, you know, not only for us to come up with a, you know, I love this information sharing. It'd be nice if we had sort of a uniform way of emailing maybe. But I also think it would be great to have a way when students do come to us to know like, okay, can we, yeah, can we send this to another department and is there possibly something there? Like, so maybe that's something our volunteer coordinator can help with. But yeah, so these are some of the questions that I think I've emailed you too. What do we do about this? Or how can I, who can I pass this resume to or? And I, and I'd be open to doing something, you know, with a student that wanted to do something more policy oriented or have an experience with the city department. But I've been hesitant to, I don't want to put something on staff that they don't remember. They've got their day's work plan already. So I don't want to put more on them that.
We had a, we had a, I would say a modest internship program. Your community development department has a pretty robust one. Parks and Rec has an internship program. Public Works is, you know, theirs are newer, you know, so I think, you know, in the schema things, I think, you know, Mike, Michael Cosgrove, you know, he was an intern, right?
Yeah, right.
A lot of lab folks.
Yeah. And so there, there's just a different spectrum. We had started to get them moving and then COVID. And so we were at the point where we were having fellowship programs in administration. And I personally believe that internship programs are the way that we're going to create a really good pipeline. We're talented Cal Poly students to then find a career here in public service. And so that's something we want to work on more, you know, as we, whatever global looks like coming out of the pandemic, you know, is, is at least as part of a, you know, a human capital strategy.
And that fellowship program is how we got Georgina, correct?
Georgina, Victoria, Andrew, Andrew. I mean, you know, we had a lot of, you know, bright stars who went on and who are doing great things in the world.
Isaac Rosen was a fellow in my office through Hastings.
And we just, all that got constrained during budget times and we were just, you know, and there's different priorities.
I'd say most departments have budget for paid interns. And yesterday I was talking with my recruitment team. There's a job fair coming up at Cal Poly at the end of January. And the topic was brought up of, well, should we be reaching out to departments and seeing if people are looking for interns? And going to the job fair and trying to find paid interns? Because usually the students, from my understanding, are looking for opportunities at the job fair, like at that moment in time. And the internship is a great way to do that. So.
So it does seem like, I mean, great, great to know at that, you know, kind of professional level, paid, regular job type of thing, even though they're internship. And then I know that there's obviously volunteer opportunities and which we'll hear more about. But in, you know, that are kind of, you know, I think there were some guidelines about that in terms of helping out at parks or, you know, pickup, trail, trailblazing or whatever. And the council internship, I mean, we call it intern, not really volunteer because they're getting professional experience, but it's unpaid. They're volunteers. So it would be, I think it would be great to get a little bit of a standardization, like what forms do they need to fill out? You know, just a reminder, I didn't really, I didn't, I never asked. So I didn't really know about the, the budget and the card, you know, the gift card process. And then if somebody comes and just writes to email council, I know there was one that you were able to pick up. And so, you know, kind of like just some awareness, who has interns, who needs interns, what's a good outreach process? Any of those types of things for those who want it. And I, I do think it's, you know, it's a good experience for them if we can accommodate students being exposed to what we do here in government in general. It's a good thing.
I know HR did have an intern a while ago. She's the granddaughter of a friend of mine. I can't remember any, but.
Nicole was an HR intern at one point.
Yes, that's how I started.
There you go. Yeah. And that was, that's when HR was still in, in City Hall. So I saw her pretty frequently. She was a Berkeley student. And then during the summer.
Juliana?
Possibly. I can't.
Yeah, we've had maybe eight interns over the course of the last 10 years.
I think it's really good if they're interested in HR.
Yeah, we're looking for two right now potentially. So. Yes, yes. If you know anyone, let me know.
If we're using the volunteer form, does that put parameters then on how they're being utilized and how many hours? Or is it just more of a blanket sort of? Yeah, giving us some degree of protection.
We shifted calling it a volunteer form to a city affiliate and registration form.
Okay.
So that first category on the revised form gives options for their type of engagement with the city. And one of them is intern. So they would just choose the intern box and not volunteer.
So we can still call them an intern even though it's unpaid?
Yeah. Essentially, it's a noun versus a verb, right? They're volunteering, but their title or their noun is an intern or a volunteer. And that still waves and identifies the city.
That's kind of why I don't like them to pick the word intern as their title. I'm like, you're the social communications coordinator or whatever. Because I feel like intern is so, it doesn't give it any oomph when they're doing their resume or their application for their job. I mean, they did, they did actual tasks, you know, that were good. They created a communications planner. They created a campaign or whatever it was. And so I, I, I feel like they, they got more than just like an intern is like, I don't know.
Well, that's funny. I have a higher level like intern. Sounds kind of more formal, official, but that way they can pick it.
Yeah.
From a medical point of view, being an intern.
Right. Internship, et cetera. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this an area, so Greg and Teresa and I were talking about this, is this an area that you would want us to provide some policy guidance in the council policies and procedures so that there's an understanding around this, just in terms of formalizing the program?
What would that mean for you?
I think, you know, we, we just, you know, right now we don't have any allowances per se. And so we just thought, hey, so Greg and I talked about this. And, you know, is this, there's something, you know, it could be a simple, the city council shall have, you know, allow for interns, you know, for based on honorary basis, they shall be used for, just so there's some parameters.
Yeah, up to this many per whatever.
Just some, some parameters, just so that you all or whoever comes in isn't like, oh, I didn't know there was interns. Because right now it's like, we don't want it to be the, the secret, the city council secret.
I think in the beginning, when we have our training as a brand new council person, similar to later, when I was like, wait, Aaron got a desk, huh? What? So I think there's, there's, there's this weird knowledge that like if everyone did different things with their budget that no one knows. And so I think that's where that information, some people do this, some people do that, just letting you know kind of thing, I think is important. But I think that there are also, you know, California law rules, we are not able to give more than $500 in a year. And there are some things that are kind of, make sure we don't want to go into the employment realm, don't give them your own money. There are some things that, you know, should be trained.
They can't do things that are city-defined job positions for free.
But I feel like if you do a policy, then it kind of creates a weird space, like, oh, do I have to have an intern now? Do I? You know, I mean, I feel like it might create.
No, but the steps would be helpful of, you know, if you get one, then you fill out this form and then, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's policies and procedures, right? So I think it's more like a procedure than a policy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
If you choose to hire interns.
Exactly. If you choose, here's the process, you know, interns are.
But is the process the same?
Coordinator who will assist you with appropriate forms.
Yeah. The reason I say that is we all, you know, we all have great confidence and trust in this group. And there may be other folks who come on who have different ideas and having a written understanding of how interns are used, I think would be useful for everyone.
Yeah. So it does seem like there's maybe a very simple policy statement and then the procedures on how to do it. That'd be great. I mean, this is, and honestly, this is perfect for what I was interested in having this. Although I was not anticipating a crowd, so awesome. But anyway, just to kind of know who, who's doing what and then what the procedures are and have those parameters, that's Chuck. Thank you.
And this is kind of a question, I think, for our volunteer coordinator about process too. Like if we, in our travels around the community, find people that maybe have an interest in volunteering as an intern or other named job that is volunteer or otherwise, should we just send them to you? or other named job that is volunteer or otherwise, should we just send them to you? Is there a spot when they fill out the intern form to like, or the volunteer form to attach their resume? So you can kind of look at the resume and say, hey, this is where I think this person might be plugged in best? Or do you get cold calls sort of on the volunteer form? As opposed to, I think in the past, when I've found a volunteer, an intern, I've sent them to the form and said, hey, go fill this out. You need to do this, so you're an official city volunteer. And then they've known all along that they were going to work with me, I've already vetted them. But I'm just wondering if you, if you have the opposite, where you have people that are just like generally interested in something.
We definitely do, and it's figuring out what they're hoping to gain, right? Are they needing it for school credit? Are they looking for just a short term commitment? Are they looking to do a specific, work with somebody specifically with the city or take away something? So it's kind of figuring out what they want out of it. And then also here with the city, the same can be applied to the volunteer program. What is the need we have for either a generalist volunteer or someone who's more specialized? And could produce something like a manual or a hard deliverable every quarter? So that's just kind of the conversation we would have case by case, I would think. But certainly the, the process would be such that they would complete the city affiliate registration form. And then if they're already connected to a member of council or a member of our departmental staff, just connecting them as an intern with them. But I, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to, to formalize how this looks, to make sure that it's known and available to our community and not just kind of who you know kind of thing. And I also be curious, other cities too, with their internship programs, is this something where we don't have to recreate the wheel? We could just maybe replicate and create what we need for Slow.
Yeah, I'd be curious what to, you know, if somebody tomorrow submits the form and, and they, they didn't necessarily say in the form that they were affiliated with one of us, what would you do with that application?
I follow up with them directly and see, well, first I would, if they checked an internship for a specific department, I would follow up with my point of contact in that department to see if they're expecting somebody to come through. And if they're not, I would follow up with that individual volunteer, intern, or whatever check marks they, checkbox they checked and see what they were hoping to learn or gain from their experience working with the city or volunteering with the city.
Cool, that sounds great.
And so I usually require a resume to come my way. Is that something you guys have done when getting your interns or how does?
I have, I mean, I've, I've followed your model. I send out, you know, something to the journalism department or the communications department or Frank Warren, and I put it out there that I'm looking for somebody and then, you know, submit a resume to my email.
And you get multiple applicants? And you need to interview and select?
I have a couple of times, yeah. I've had, I've had three or four one time where I had to like, say sorry.
I really wanted to, I really, I really wanted to like have them all, because I just wanted them all to have that experience. But I ended up just choosing one because I just, and I think I sent a couple of them to Erica. I sent a couple of them to Hans when he was doing his Cal Matters recruitments and cause I don't want, you know, I want people to have the experience they want, I just can't, I don't have that capacity.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah, I, I, well, anyway, I've got a year left, so I probably won't bother at this point. But maybe, maybe do one last one in terms of the social media, but I just haven't been that into it, so I haven't done that. So just a couple of ones that reached out to me, but yeah, so, and it was more like a conversation like, hey, is this a match?
But that's good for me to know too, because like there was, there was this one student, Brandon, who had come to a bunch of our meetings and he's one that I had coffee with and maybe he had coffee with some of the rest of you too. But he just wanted to kind of feel out local government. And so if there's somebody like that, that you would be interested in at least meeting with and see if you could, you know, get together and brainstorm some topics that they could, you know, help around.
Right, yeah, cause with each one, kind of like, okay, what's the particular interest? So like it worked well that the, the first one that was more interested in policy, it was a lot of interest in climate, climate change. And so to be able to kind of pick, I mean, there's so many legislative, you know, things to review. So to be able to kind of go through and pick and choose and have her take a deeper dive and, you know, try to align it with the Cal Cities and stuff, yeah.
It's cool.
All right. Anything else?
This is really, this is really helpful, I'm glad we had, had the opportunity to do this. We'll think about, you know, we've got a council policies, procedures, update that'll come in April. And so as we think about that, we'll keep it real simple, just so that there's clarity of purpose and roles. And, and then more importantly, I think for Kirsten and her team, just, you know, for in terms of processing, to make sure we have all the paperwork all lined up, so it's fairly seamless on your side after you make your selection.
And I'd be stoked to take on an intern if anybody stumbles on extras and wants to send them my way.
Cool, and if you have like certain topics that you're interested in?
Been mostly focused on like the policy thing, that's kind of the helpful part for me right now. But yeah, anybody that's interested in doing deep dives on those kinds of things.
Well, and if they're not seniors, if they're, they're going to be around for a while, I've also encouraged a lot of students to apply for advisory bodies. And that's certainly not an internship, but you know, it's a way of, of that pipeline thing of getting, you know, on the other hand, if they're a senior or they're already, you know, they won't be around, so, yeah.
It could be.
Yeah, they could be.
They could come back. Thank you. Oh, nice.
Um, is there? Okay.
I have to do tomorrow, construction board.
Thank you.
That's scary. We should be able to just.
Office.
No, thank you. Had a regular dollar. We're on the other side. We're on the other side.
Okay. Come here, you want.
Yeah, construction related, but.
Yeah.
You're sharing your whole screen.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was like, what's this just say? Yeah.
And Natalie, we have till 1:30?
Yes.
Okay, great. Are you introducing or am I?
Um, I can introduce, so yeah, the next item is Kirsten's going to give us an overview of the volunteer program, which is a perfect transition from our last topic. But I'm person at Cal Poly, do you know who they're contacted?
Kirsten's ready.
We're ready. Thank you. So yeah, hi, my name is Kirsten Anderson, I'm the volunteer coordinator here at the city of Slow. And I know faces in the room, it'd be helpful if you don't mind, just go around briefly and just say your name and your position. That's okay, you want to start with perhaps?
Natalie.
Natalie, I'm policy and project manager and city admin.
Christine, city attorney.
Megan Tully, recreation manager.
Wait, Megan Tully? I thought you were Burger.
Hi, my name has changed. Erica Stewart-Mayer.
Jan Marks, I'm on the city council, it's my 15th year.
Andy Pease, city council.
Emily Francis, city council.
Nicole Domina, HR director.
Michelle Shoresman, city council.
My name is Donald, assistant city manager.
Derek Johnson, city manager.
Great, I can confirm, I knew all of those answers, so thank you very much. And thank you, everyone in this room, staff and council members for your service to our city. So it was a great place and your active contribution helps keep it that way, so thank you. So today, I was invited, much thanks to council member Shoresman to give an overview of our new volunteer portal, Engage Slow, so we're going to get to that later in the presentation. But sitting on the agenda for your brown bag, I also thought it'd be a great opportunity to talk about the volunteer program in general. This is the first time that many of you have met me or seen me in person and have a chance to learn about our volunteer programs. So in the spirit of the time of the year where recipes and food are being shared, in the spirit of our lunch and learn format, and in the spirit of something I love to do, which is cook, bienvenidos a la cocina del programa de voluntarios. Welcome to the volunteer program kitchen. So we're going to talk today about all of the ingredients that are going in actively to the volunteer program to create an amazing recipe that will continue to transform and evolve and grow over time and the projected impact we're going to have on our community through it. So it's about nine months since I started, so there's been lots of planting of seeds, there's lots of germinating, there's some sprouts and some harvesting going on. I'll talk about the ingredients and really the recipe that we're aiming for is a community that is served and a staff that is served. And the projected impact we're having is hopefully a greater sense of belonging and meaning amongst our volunteers, a sense of place for this beautiful place we all call home, and a city staff, a city organization that feels supported. When I first joined our HR team, was just wrapping up the employee engagement survey. And one of the biggest takeaways from that, that survey and that analysis was that staff could benefit from additional personnel. So let this program, let these people, whether they're generalists or specialists, come in and support our staff through volunteerism. So again, my name is Kirsten, I've been in the volunteer management field for the last 10 years in the nonprofit sector. So I bring a lot of skill, a lot of knowledge around volunteerism, but I'm not an expert in city government. I'm really relying on working with, collaborating with city divisional staff to inform me of what their needs are and collaborating together to produce a well-matched volunteer for their, for their need. And I report to Megan Tully, that's why she's here. I'm housed in Parks and Recreation, this position is citywide though, so it made sense structurally to put me in Parks and Rec, which I love, because of all the volunteer and community activity in the department. But it really is here to support every division, every department in the city of San Luis Obispo. So we're going to start with talking a bit about our ingredients. So each of you has a recipe card in front of you. And on the left-hand side are all of the ingredients that go into, have gone into creating an effective and successful volunteer program start. So when I first started, we started with a pulse check on volunteerism. What are we doing? Is it working? What have we tried and why did it stop? What can we do now with a dedicated, with a dedicated full-time employee and a budgeted resource for their support? And also curious around what resources we have and what we need. And very grateful for an activated vision from many of you in this room, city council and city leadership fix program to take place. The learnings around the needs assessment and the SWOT analyses that I did with different divisions supervisors is that volunteers are currently and will continue to benefit city operations and projects. There is a lot of education around what a volunteer is, what volunteering is, how it differs from an intern and make sure, making sure that we're using those terms and marketing those terms correctly to our community. And also a great need to identify champions here within the city for this volunteer program, whether they're volunteers themselves or have used volunteers in the past. Who can I start collaborating with to gain traction, to gain traction for this program to take place? And starting with small wins. So we identified some internal and external stakeholders and also explored potential for partnerships to advance our major city goals and involve our community. Volunteering really helps people build social capital, so not only are city employees benefiting from additional personnel, but we have a loneliness epidemic in this country. And volunteering, if you've done it yourself, you know, brings people together of like-minded backgrounds and interests. So it's really exciting to see this program take, take shape. So what do we need? We need continued leadership support for staff buy-in and accountability. We have created a great program infrastructure, and I'll talk more about our volunteer portal in a little bit, protocols, processes and policies. We've also identified best in industry tools. So we are using a state-of-the-art content management system called Engage Slow, which is what we called it. And a lot of other volunteer programs use that as well. And I'll do a live demo at the end of this presentation of that. We've also, this is our recipe component, we've also produced internal understanding, hopefully. Megan and I toured over six weeks, every single department here in the city and did a volunteer program roadshow, where I gave a big overview of what the volunteer program is, the benefits to engaging volunteers and how to access this program. So we've created an internal process where if you need to volunteer, there's a form to fill out internally that informs what kind of volunteer you're going to need and kind of what the next steps are in terms of what I need to do to create a position description, how we're going to market it, how we're going to list on Engage Slow and match those potential volunteers appropriately internally with city staffs. It's a very similar conversation that we're having around interns. What does that person want? What do they bring? What are their interests? And what are the needs here internally for staff to use them? I think that there is an organic shift happening around the conversation of, yes, we're all so busy performing, 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 but there has to be space to stop and learn and really think. I have talked to a lot of fellow municipal volunteer program managers and administrators, and there's really two types of volunteer programs within a city government. There's one that is great for PR, there's one that's great to direct the public to if they have an interest. And there's another model that's strategic, that is built into fiscal and quarterly planning, where volunteers aren't an afterthought, volunteers are a part of the conversation in terms of what personnel, what assets do we have in our community? We have incredible, we're so lucky to live here, we have incredibly high value assets in our community. We have professors, we have students looking for internships who are on the cutting edge of innovative thoughts and ideas. We have active professionals who perhaps have a volunteering in the workplace kind of model at their, at their work. We have seniors who, despite their, their number or their location, are still looking to be involved and have a purpose and perhaps bring a wealth of background and customer service that could help the front desk of our CDD and direct them to the right channel at that department to engage with the public. So there's lots of opportunities for us to tap into and I'm grateful this position exists and that it'll continue to grow with everyone in this room's support. So.
I just wanted to say, we used to have a volunteer desk out here in City Hall and, and it was staffed by senior citizens. And so when someone would come into City Hall and look lost, they would just greet them and, yeah.
Just a warm face, a warm body to welcome them
Yeah, it was nice.
To city government and direct them in the right place. We have just about 85 individual volunteers in our program right now, and that's growing. We have more groups activated as well with this position and this program's formality. And we have just over a thousand volunteer hours recorded since May. So obviously a lot before that, because our friends in Parks and Rec have been using volunteers a lot with their events and their programming. But this position and this program really enables, enable us to formalize, professionalize and make a more consistent and streamlined way as to how we're onboarding and engaging the public. And we're getting Slow a steady buy-in from different staff members, which I'm really happy to say. We have a few requests from our finance team, our CDD team, to help with the hard copy digitization? Digitization, what is that?
Digitization.
Digitization. Taking this and making it a soft copy. So I'm very excited that we, we're onboarding our first project, special, special project volunteer this Wednesday. I met with her last week and had a great interview. She's a Cal Poly student, just looking to get involved, not looking for any kind of course credit, just wants to get involved with the local community. So she'll be digitizing all of our, all of our hard copies at the Jack House. So historical preservation of documents and making them into a digital file. She'll also be helping me with the volunteer program. And we have two more applicants for that position that I'm funneling again into finance and CDD and a few lingering projects they have in Parks and Recreation, again, for digitization. So there are opportunities for the public to get involved. Like I've mentioned, we created a really strong infrastructure of new and revised policies and processes. We revised our city affiliate and registration form. We've created a volunteer agreement for those who are going to be with us for short or long terms, really kind of six months plus. And I've been working closely with Kate Oslin and, and risk management to make sure the city is protected with all of these new ways the public are engaging, as well as our friends in legal. And so, yeah, so we have volunteers at the Senior Center, the Jack House, community services, events, community gardens and ranger service. Those are kind of our existing programs and we're enhancing those. And then we're building out new volunteer opportunities as well. We had a really successful pilot over the summer to launch an adopt a park program. So we were at Mitchell Park, which we're still at. We had a structured service day at Santa Rosa, which went really, really well. And then we have Sinsheimer, Laguna Lake and Islay Hill also available for adoption. We have a group that's adopted Islay Hill and are serving there once a month. So it's kind of an assessment phase right now as we continue to work with our friends in Public Works, Park Maintenance, to determine what their needs are, what their availability is to supply different resources and how I can, as a coordinator, coordinate the personnel to support their needs. So exciting things are coming. In terms of our spring, summer and fall 2024 menu, there is lots available. So we are looking at expanding and sustaining volunteer opportunities with the city partners, our Adopt a Park program, our project volunteers, a lot of conversation around not just planting trees, but maintaining the care of those trees. So how can we work with our partners in EcoSlow and other, other community-based organizations, other nonprofit organizations that really align with our major city goals? Which is how this program was, was kind of formulated. How can we support our major city goals here at the city and engage different groups also kind of on that parallel trajectory? How can we support our major city goals here at the city and engage different groups also kind of on that parallel trajectory? We want to boost volunteer retention and a sense of belonging. So it'd be great to, you know, when we have different events, have a cohort of volunteers that we can tap into that were a known quantity that we've seen before. I know a lot of Cal Poly volunteers, of course, need their hours, but if maybe we could extract one or two to kind of take the lead on wrangling the volunteers rather than staff, that would free up a lot of staff time and and support that. So we want to see regular, ongoing, recurring volunteers, week to week, month to month, year to year. And again, foster that sense of belonging and place. And then we want to broaden collaboration with different community partners. So we're talking to Rotary. We're talking to other organizations that perhaps have some kind of service component built into their purpose. I've been talking a lot. I'm going to move over to the live demo, but are there any questions about kind of just a broad overview of the volunteer program? And how it works? This was like forty thousand feet. The volunteer program roadshow went into some weeds, so I apologize. I'm just so excited that you're here. Yeah, I am too. I'm grateful to city leadership and, you know, our budget for allowing it.
So I think the vision was really to try to capture, I think, you know, the people's ability to co-create with us and to be front stage and helping them love their community. We got and we know that we can build a lot of trust and also just care for the community when people see that, hey, you know, I always share the one where my daughter and I planted a tree in Mitchell Park. So every time we go by, we look at our tree, you know, and so for us, that's really important. I think there are literally thousands of ways we can have that play out. You know, Kirsten and I, and via Megan, we talked a little bit about, you know, Adopt a Road programs. You know, we're seeing a lot of trash on our programs these days, so you may see some of that roll out. But Kirsten and Megan have just exceeded all expectations with the dimensions in which they've rolled out this. It's taken some time, but I think it's, you know, it's coming out of the oven in a way that I think is yeah, piece of the, you know, piece for everyone.
It's interesting. I struggle the the line that that I thankfully feel like we are not crossing. But I was a little concerned in terms of, are we going to, if somebody is in the community looking for volunteer community, volunteer opportunity, might they end up choosing the city over some other nonprofit that desperately needs volunteers? So I I don't think that's happening, because I think that, you know, folks look at an array and they each offer different things. It's volunteering for the city in particular is pretty specific. But I I do hope that we continue to kind of just monitor that, so we don't become volunteer central for, you know what I mean? And so, yeah.
Well, like you mentioned EcoSlow, I know they have a contract with the city, right? And so, you know, that's an ongoing, they've got a huge database of people who want to volunteer in that very specific kind of climate, climate change.
I'm a treekeeper.
Well, my my tree stuff is through the Rotary, which is also, I mean, I think it's important to nurture these alliances with groups that already exist, just exactly kind of addressing what what you're talking about. But I I don't foresee any particular conflict myself.
Seems like there's plenty, you know.
Yeah, plenty of opportunities go around, and it also seems like you are fully intending and maybe already have been engaging with other organizations, so that if somebody comes through our door, maybe there's sort of a no wrong door. You know, someone comes through our portal looking for a volunteer opportunity, and maybe we don't quite have just the right fit, but you will have an awareness of other organizations that might be doing the same thing, EcoSlow.
I have a question about, oh, sorry, about just orientation. I know you have, we have this welcoming for new employees. I'm wondering if there would ever be an occasion where you get a bunch of these volunteers together and kind of give them an overview of the city and a sense of the city culture, that kind of thing. Because I, you know, that's fun, too. I mean, you're volunteering, you know, your student who's digitizing records might want to have a little social contact with somebody.
For sure, yeah. We're moving into the spring, and with that, Megan and I are doing a big planning session this Thursday about kind of what the next six months, year, two years look like with this program. There's a definite need, which is a normal best practice in volunteer administration, to orient volunteers, right? Whether it's a manual, which is kind of static and assumptive that they're actually going to read it. But there's also in-person orientations, very similar to our day of welcome, that I foresee quarterly happening with our volunteers. Respecting our legacy volunteers who have been with us for a while and bringing them onboard, but also creating more space for new volunteers as well. So I envision both in-person trainings, orientations, not just to the city, City 101 per se, because these are ambassadors, these are these are voters, these are taxpayers, these are our potential allies. You know, we want their experience with the city to be a positive one, as associations, that when they go back into their community or their workplace or their classrooms, that I had a great experience volunteering with the city, check it out, kind of thing. But also staff internally who are utilizing volunteers, perhaps this is their first time managing somebody. It's a great professional development opportunity, but do they have those skills and resources to effectively manage personnel? I'm not sure. And so something I also see with this role evolving into is providing that kind of staff training, that staff orienting to effectively managing volunteers. We want them to come back, kind of thing. So there's a lot, I mean, we are just at the start of the funnel. There is so much that we've we've laid a really solid foundation. And based on my experience, what other cities do, I see just a really wide growth for this program and excited to to move into it. We also are playing with the idea, not playing, I think, moving towards the idea of a formal like community connector. So kind of like a city ambassador, so people who come to the city and perhaps just want to learn about the city. Perhaps they walk downtown and there's a smiling face, a welcoming face, in collaboration with our friends at Downtown Slow. Perhaps there are people in communities, in neighborhoods, who live in that community, speak that language, whether it's an actual language or just a local kind of way of getting around in that community. And that's that's not just for a sense of belonging connection, it's also for a sense of safety with our city. For whatever reasons, some neighbors don't have positive associations with government, with law enforcement. So can we identify people in our different neighborhoods who could be that voice, could be that connector to fire, to PD, to admin, to council? So there's lots of opportunity and potential there. But with that, you know, are they all speaking the city language too? And really aware of how we function internally as a city. So lots of opportunity there. I love the idea of no wrong door. The way this program is set up is that we will have opportunities for the public to volunteer as informed by city needs. So there is a lot of weight put on individuals in the city and public works and utilities and admin to inform me of what their needs are. You know, I can coordinate and wrangle the volunteers for them, but I need to know what the needs are. So if we have someone who comes to us and they want to be a treekeeper, obviously EcoSlow is kind of the the way we would direct them. But gosh, we have a whole park maintenance team who also deals with trees. We have sustainability, natural resources, so it's really up to them to continue to tell me what they need. I do, we are moving towards an external volunteer newsletter, too. So perhaps it's featuring how you can get engaged with the city government, you know, city volunteer program, but also what our formal and informal partners are doing in the community and how to volunteer with them. United Way of Slow County has a great hub of different organizations in the county that people can volunteer with as well. So we have about 10 minutes left. Can I move on to kind of our live demo of our housemate sauce, which is Engage Slow? So Engage Slow is a consistent, consolidated, professional subdomain of the City of Slow website. It's volunteer.slosacity.org. It is live, and it's really a volunteer portal for the public to view, filter, and enroll as an individual or a team, and a workplace team, a student team with the city. They can receive reminders, automated reminders, notifications of their upcoming shifts. They can view a volunteer resume, all of which I'll show you. And on the backend, it's a really beneficial way for staff to consolidate records, to pull up reports, to view rosters, emergency contact information, to learn about a volunteer's skills, what they bring, but also their interests, perhaps where they want to grow, and how we can create those meaningful opportunities for them to stay with us and grow with us. So I'm going to pop over to the screen.
That's a great photo.
That was taken by volunteer Pataker. This is somebody who, in our community, Sarah Ford, comes to a lot of our events and captures these amazing images, edits them, and donates her time, not just at the event, but her editing skills as well.
It just looks like it's going to hurt.
So and then how can city council members share this tool in our community? I think we've talked about that a lot. But just keep referring people to volunteer.slosacity.org or my email address as well. Engage Slow is a great way to kind of funnel people, and I can learn more about what their interests are. So I pop over to this bitty bitty screen. Okay, so this is the homepage, volunteer.slosacity.org. We have, I think visually appealing, I worked, I created a small team. There were three of us who worked with our vendor called Galaxy Digital. And this is a platform that a lot of different, both public and private agencies use to manage their volunteer programs. So this is what any person off the street is going to see. The programs and opportunities, so think of programs as kind of the umbrella, and the opportunities underneath the programs are specific to that individual program. So we have four programs currently. We have capacity for six. And we have a lot more opportunities built into these these wider-reaching programs. So I have created a kind of dummy account to play with. This is my email address from like eight years old, so no judgment, please. It's Onggo, and when I was little, I still do love gorillas, but Onggo is gorilla in dialect, okay. So they would create an account. I've created a kind of dummy account just to kind of show you what it'll look like from the public-facing perspective. And this is really their dashboard. It indicates how many hours they have served with the committee, I'm sorry, with the city, what their impact value is. And it's cool, because you can hover over it and it'll highlight what exactly each field is. So this is the calculated rate based on your total hours and local rate of volunteerism. So here within the City of San Luis Obispo, California in general, every hour a volunteer serves is worth roughly thirty-seven dollars. That's not just their compensation that a staff would receive, it's also the benefits. So that's a lot of money that these volunteers are saving the city, based on just seventeen hours of service. It talks about what skills they have applied in their work, and also different opportunities suggested for them. So when they pop over to different opportunities that they have responded to, they can see all of their upcoming shifts, they can see their schedule. This person is scheduled for a shift on November twenty-second, which is our next Ranger Work Day. I think Councilmember Frances was involved in one of those and hopefully had a good time. We have volunteers helping our Ranger Service program, we have volunteers helping our Jack House program, Community Gardens, Community Services events. Some of the links will be private, and that's because we have groups already committed year to year to serving those capacities. But those are kind of just side conversations I'm having with different program managers about how can we ensure this is still accessible and inclusive for others to join as well? So we're not losing that cohort after they all graduate or or leave for whatever reason. Okay, so we talked about dashboard opportunities. I want to pop back over to opportunities. And I want to draw your attention to the three opportunities that this volunteer can apply to volunteer with. We have flexible shifts, multiple shifts available, and a shift that happens on, and these are all live. So movers and shakers, event support needed. This is for our next quarterly management meeting, which helps our HR team with events set up and breakdown. So this this volunteer could apply for that, which happens January thirty-first. We have multiple shifts available, so every Wednesday, our Ranger Service team brings out a group of volunteers to help hand-build trails in our amazing trail system here in Slow. And then once a month, we also have a Saturday workday for different groups to come out and help with those projects. And then we have flexible shifts. These are shifts that volunteers are just needed, you know, every Sunday or from time to time. So we're going to pop over to build and maintain city trails with Rangers. And if I'm getting too much in the weeds, just let me know. If we click on this opportunity, it gives a brief overview. This is all content I've created that outlines what this position, what this shift is all about. Similar to how we would onboard an employee, I've created volunteer position descriptions for every single volunteer role. This outlines their role, what department they're in, what location they'll be serving, anything specific they'll need to know in terms of physical or mental capabilities required, what to bring, what to expect, who they're reporting to, just kind of a one-stop shop for everything they're going to need. I'm assuming not everyone's going to read this, so they still receive a confirmation email, just outlining, you know, where to meet, what to bring, what not to bring, kind of things. But this is just a best practice in volunteer management and making sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. And yeah, and then these are all of the shifts that are available. So I want to respond to the next Ranger Work Day on Wednesday, November fifteenth. I'm going to respond individually as opposed to volunteering as a team, which is another thing that somebody could do. I'm not going to go into those details. I'm so little.
You could come and say, I have twenty people that want to do the Ranger Service Day, and I'm going to sign them all up.
Exactly. And I would essentially then close that shift immediately, so no one else kind of signs up. It auto-populates the shifts I've already signed up for, as well as that one that I just checked, which is kind of cool. A nice note here, you know, it's my first time, or I have asthma, I'll bring my inhaler, or I have a service animal, can I bring them? Just a note to the to the program manager. And then after every volunteer signs up for a shift, whoever is assigned to that program gets a notification. So just there's a lot of internal automated communication. It's going to save staff a lot of time. This is essentially our city affiliate registration form uploaded. I'm working with Risk and Legal to make sure that checking it is enough, but we still are currently requiring them to sign it. There's also some possibility with DocuSign to also just have an e-signature. So I'm going to submit my opportunity response, and that's going to show up on my volunteer schedule. So there's a way to add it to your calendar, to share it with your friends, hey, come out next service Saturday, or next Community Garden Day. So it's just a really innovative, creative, streamlined way to onboard people to our volunteer program. I'm mindful of time. There's much more to show with this. I'd be happy to set up, you know, additional conversations in an appropriate format to meet with council members. But first glance, first impression, that's kind of where we're at. One really cool feature that I want to make sure that I'm highlighting is back to our dashboard, going to our opportunity responses. I do want to show you. See, so to view your volunteer resume, this is kind of like your volunteer report card. And this is really helpful, especially for people who are doing this for class or academic credit, or again, volunteering in employee workplaces. You can choose kind of what range you're looking to have featured, and it downloads, should download. Is this, am I able to download?
There might be a pop-up to say there we go.
Okay, so this essentially will show my entire individual report card for how I engage as a volunteer with the city. So it talks about all your shifts, of course, your total hours, your impact value, what skills I've applied, which will of course be built out, and then every single shift I have performed during that date range that I selected. So again, this saves us a lot of time if people are needing, you know, some kind of verification justification for, you know, their service.
Do people need to individually track their hours, just logging in and looking and seeing that hours weren't showing up? So is that something that they have to go back in and log them on their own?
There's two options. They can do that, and then hours will be submitted for approval, and the program manager would go in and manually approve them. You can set up the default if you're really trusting of that volunteer or that volunteer group to just manually automatically approve them.
The official record, so.
Exactly.
Got it.
And volunteers can check in and out. There's also a mobile app that'll, you know, you say you sign up and you arrive at your shift ten minutes late. You can sign up at nine-ten and check out at eleven-ten, so it'll kind of address that as well. But yes, there are ways to track hours and approve them.
Yeah, have you have you talked to the Downtown Association about this? Because I know every time there's a holiday parade, there's this frantic call for volunteers, usually way too late. I mean, you know, but just to help with the crowd management.
Yeah.
They get to wear a vest, and they don't really do much. They are, you know.
Kelly and Shannon and I are in touch. They've expressed their needs for holidays. Because that's not a city-run event, what I've done is I've pivoted it, pivoted, sorry, I've transitioned it to, I know there's association with the word pivot. I've transitioned it to our friends at Pace to advertise it internally amongst city employees to volunteer for holiday setup and decorations and the and the parade itself. Exactly. And that's kind of what we're doing. There's no, there's no closed doors. Essentially, I'm just learning about who I can transition that resource to.
Yeah, so it is a tricky.
There's a lot to navigate, yeah.
Do we have any restrictions around teens?
We don't.
Well. Age, or parents have to be there at a below a certain age or anything like that?
We do, so it's 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 kind of case by case. For our group that has adopted Islay Hill Park, it's a youth group out of a local church. And so we have one volunteer leader. And so we have one volunteer leader essentially sign off for that entire group. And whoever participates is essentially under that waiver. And it's, we ask that it's eighteen and up if you're not a part of a group to be, you know, on your own. And then if you're eighteen and under to have a parent with you, again, if that's a city kind of individual event. So we do have a mother-daughter team who volunteers with us a lot, but if it's a group signing up to adopt a park, they can be any age as long as that group leader signs our waiver, which covers everyone participating.
And the group leader has to be over eighteen.
Exactly. Yeah. And then they self-report their hours. We're still, you know, navigating all that, but they self-report their hours to me. And I just create kind of a, not a dummy account, but like a, a group participant account in Engage Slow, to make sure we're capturing that data.
Can I, yeah, I'm at, um, Parks and Rec staff are also going to be meeting in the next, like, twenty-four hours tomorrow to talk about other ways that we can engage our teens, um, through volunteerism and through job development, things that we used to do with like the CIT program, counselor and training program, but even more broadband than that. So then there will be other ways to other waivers and we'll work with our friends to make sure we're getting the right waiver signed.
Yeah. For instance, our Jack House volunteer program, um, I spoke with our lead docent volunteer, Toni Kincaid. And she's, she's fine with youth. So for instance, on the opportunity itself, public facing, it's eight and older. You know, come one, come all. If you want to tell stories of, you know, your, your parents or a long-term docent, you're welcome here too. So we are building out youth opportunities, absolutely.
I suspect there might be a bunch of teens that might want to help once we start working on pump track, things like that.
Pump track trails, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff. I mean, there's, there's different groups and I've, I had this idea that, you know, we could engage the senior community to do, you know, fine gardening, you know, in Mission Plaza. The previous executive director, um, talked at the Botanic Garden, talked to Hurya. I have lots of volunteers would love and come and be, you know, spend their cultural expertise on doing some planting and some work in Mission Plaza. So I think the program will mature over time and there'll be different groups that have different interests when, uh, when they find where they could contribute.
Really take that lead from our park maintenance team, from Darren kind of indicating, these are our needs. This is what I'm going to train them and then there we go. We've talked about the entrance to Cal Poly on, um, Highland, kind of needing some regular upkeep and beautification. That's really like the first point of the city. So that'll be coming down the pike as soon as, you know, Darren and I coordinate the details.
So is there a way for volunteers to suggest an opportunity?
Yes. Yeah, but again, that doesn't manifest until and if I have a need internally.
Of course.
Yeah, so.
Well, I guess, well, the reason I bring that up is we've talked about at times there are only so many programs that can be get done or projects can be done in a year. But some people are like, but I could do that project. And it's on your, not your large, you know, capital improvement, like a freeway or something, but it's, it's, it's on our program, but we're not going to get to it, but volunteers that have expertise can do it. So I guess my concern is if you don't hear there's a need, but there's a volunteer group that's open to it, you know, how do we make that match? And that's part of where we discuss this volunteer.
So, yeah, there we're getting into some pretty complicated issues where we've got a defined public project that is subject to public contracting provisions and bidding requirements and substituting in volunteer services and whether there are defined city classifications that would otherwise be deployed to work that we are now substituting volunteers and there's labor relations implications there. So that, that's a pretty deep dive.
Yes, it is.
And I would say beyond, um, certainly not in my office's work program, which would be deeply involved right now. But I think we could, I could imagine, you know, for example, where, you know, let's say the, the South Street Medians, you know, when we get that project designed. You know, when that project is designed and having a volunteer work day. You know, and volunteers come out and, you know, we lay the plants out and, and they come and.
Adopt a median.
Yeah, yeah. They're a force multiplier in an effort and, you know.
Yeah.
And where I envision that living is our internal SharePoint for the volunteer program, just having a running list of community assets. You know, who they are, who the point person is, what skills they bring, when they're available. Um, so that I'm not constantly emailing, adding to their people's workload. They have a one-stop shop to essentially look at what's available in our community to tap into internally, so.
Well, I think you have a more than twenty-four hour a day job.
Thank you for having me.
I want to say too, from the user side, the email communication was brilliant.
Oh, good.
All of the details and like came in at the right pace, which was really great.
Well, one of our ingredients is program evaluation, so I'm glad it's Megan's way of nursing.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for setting this up.
Talking to Mary about the next round. I think we, we got one in.
Yeah, we got one.
We got two.
Yeah, so it shows that I did a volunteer shift and it doesn't show that I have any hours logged.